Our temporary delay has been concluded and we are ready to begin. Thank you, everybody, for attending. I would like to call to order this regular session of the Library Board of Trustees. It is now 10:06 on Wednesday, March 12, 2025. We're meeting in the City Hall Complex on Grand Avenue in Nogales. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We all have a copy of the agenda. I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
You all moved?
Moved by Juanita Havel. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Pancho. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Call to the public pursuant to ARS 38-43.01. Gee, the Library Board of Trustees may make an open call to the public during a public meeting. Individual members may respond to criticism made to them who addressed the board, may ask staff to review a matter or ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. The Library Board of Trustees shall not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during an open call to the public unless the matters have been properly noticed on the agenda for discussion and legal action. Are there any calls to the public? Ms. Darling, you wish to speak?
Good morning. Good morning, Chairperson and the board. Thank you for letting me be here. Oh, we have another member. I have my notes in my phone, and I normally haven't done it this way, so bear with me. My name is Mary Darling, and I live on Crawford Street here in Nogales. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all today about a few subjects, specifically the meeting rooms and the conversations about those, federal funding, Saturday hours for the Nogales branch, and the ACLU red cards. Regarding the meeting rooms, I've used the Nogales meeting room here in the library. It's lovely, and it's actually a room to be proud of, frankly, though it could use some artwork, FYI, in my opinion. I was in the Rio Rico meeting room yesterday. Unfortunately, I haven't been able to use it for one of my meetings, but I found the room really helpful, and it's easy to find, though I would say some signage could be useful. And I know it's a county building, but still. And I'm also a little perplexed over the table situation, because there doesn't seem to be enough tables, so we were kind of all scrunched together. But maybe that was due to the size of the meeting, participants. And then the form needed to be completed, and that was a little bit of an awkward situation. And it's the meeting room. I understand the rules, blah, 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 blah. I didn't have to fill it in, but Joy did. And I am just curious, because I've been to that library a few times now. What's the purpose of that shelving cart out in front? And I'm just curious about that cart. And again, I want to say the meeting rooms and the ability to use them for the community is super fantastic. So thank you for the library folks to be kind of moving that forward. I will be brief on federal funding, because it concerns me regarding the county and the city. That has to do with perhaps the chaos going on at the federal government level and that there is concerns out there in the world about federal funding freezes and the impact on city budgets and county budgets. And my understanding that is something that is being worked through with the finance directors and the elected leadership. But I'm also cognizant budgets will start to be worked on and what impact or effect that might have on the library budget. Coupled with the, I know we've had a conversation about Saturday hours for the Nogales branch. And I don't, I feel, I felt, I walked away feeling that there was support to have that happen. I'm just not sure what the next steps might be to make that happen. And lastly, the ACLU has published the red cards about citizens and their knowledge of their rights concerning ICE interactions. And I did not know if the library has those cards here. Other public entities or nonprofit organizations do, such as Mariposa Community Health. And so I was just curious if that's something that the library has or could potentially just have the cards available. And that is all I have for this morning. So thank you so much for the work that you all do on behalf of the public libraries. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much, Mary. Your comments are very well taken and very much appreciated by all of us on the board. And if any board member has an item from her conversation that they want to place on a future agenda, you have an opportunity to do that at the end of our meeting. Thank you. Moving forward, discussion items. Act One, Culture Pass by Library Supervisor Martinez.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman, Board members. So yeah, so the library is partner with Act One. Act One, it's an organization that creates partnerships within Arizona museums, zoos, anything that's art-related. So we are partnered together in their program, Culture Pass. What Culture Pass is, we provide free entries, free passes to about 19 sites within museums, parks, zoos. And what patrons have to do is just have a card. Library cards are free, so they come up to the front, the osito displays. They will grab that, bring it to the front desk, and get their free ticket. Each ticket counts for two entries, and it's valid for a week. So they have like, once they check that out, they have that week to visit the museum. And these museums are in Phoenix, Tucson, even Apache Junction. And we have, it's part of also the two back per studio. So about 19 sites that we have free passes for our community. And these passes will be in each library. So all the county will be part of the Culture Pass free entries. You guys have any questions?
Any board member have a question?
I have a question. You mentioned the two back per studio, but can you provide other examples? Probably in Tucson, since it's the closest to us?
Yeah, so we have like the University Zona Museum of Arts, the Tucson Desert Art Museum, Tucson Museum of Arts, La Botanica Gardens in Phoenix, the Desert Botanical Garden as well, children museums in Tucson. So there's a lot of different ones. Even Scottsdale, we have one at Scottsdale Museum on Contemporary Arts, Sedona Museum. So yeah, 19 sites.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Where is the list available?
We have it available. Once we put the displays out, we have those, and of course, online as well.
And you have to have a library card to check them out, right?
That's correct.
Good.
So it's free for patrons.
And we will also email the board the links, so you're able to know more in depth about Act One, Culture Pass. So you'll get that, too.
And it's really simple. They just have to show their ticket, the ticket they get like, once they check up books. That will count for two entries.
One other question. Is there a limit on how many people can get?
Yeah, so it is one pass per week per library branch. So if I check one at Nogales, I can go the next day to the Rio Rico. I have to wait until that expires after a week and maybe go to the Rio Rico library and get another ticket for another place, or let's see.
All right. Any further questions by board members? Thank you. Is there another item you wish to discuss?
Yeah, I will have Juan Pablo talk about the Southwestern books.
Good morning, everyone. So this, those books that I've just given to you are part of the, of the books that the library has just acquired that's enriching our collection with these notable titles that are recognized by the 2025 Southwest Books of the Year. This annual list is curated by the Pima County Public Library. It highlights outstanding works, works that delve into our unique culture and history and landscapes of the Southwest. So they're part of our collection, and they all go to the different branches. As you can see, they're for young adults, for children, adults as well.
Questions? Anybody have any questions they would like to ask? I have a few myself, but are these all the books you have, or is this just a sample?
They are part of the, of the books that-
So there are more than this?
Are considered as a 2025 Annual Books of the Year.
Well, I personally am very grateful for Literature of the Southwest is my forte, and I've been reading it for 40 years. And I'm very well acquainted with many Southwestern authors, novelists. And I very appreciate the library adding these to the collection.
Are these the books that appear in the brochure, the Southwest?
Oh, yeah.
And you have, do you have those at the library? Oh, okay.
Yes.
Yeah. Right, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Any further questions by board members?
I have a question. Are there any in Spanish?
I'm not sure. I think they're all in English. This, this year, what I've noticed, they're all in English.
Sometimes the children's books are in English and Spanish, some years. So if you go back a few years, and we do have some of those, too. We've had the collection. We've done the Southwest books for, ever since I've been around, and I've been around a long time. So yeah, and if you find any titles that you want or that you see that we don't have, please let us, let me know.
Any further questions? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your presentation. Item two on our agenda, Early Childhood Education in Santa Cruz County, update by Member Francisco Padilla.
Chairman Vandervoet, board members, good morning. So just a quick update. We're coming up on Early Childhood Education Awareness Month. That'll be in April. I'm working on several events with different partners around the county, including the County Superintendent Schools Office and the library. So my employer, First Things First, we, we host a, an annual event. It'll be on April 12, and it's, First Things First celebrates the young child community event. That'll be at Calabasas School. That'll be out in their big field, and it'll be from 10 to 1. I'll have some flyers for everyone here in the next, hopefully, week or so that I'll, that I'll share with everyone. I'm also working with Karina and other library staff. National, what is it, Library Week? Is that what it's called? National Library Week coincides this year with National Week of the Young Child. So we'll be doing some different activities together at, at some of the libraries and inviting families with, with young children, children basically ages zero to five, to come and do some, do some different activities. I think we're looking at like arts and crafts as something that we've, that we've looked at and hopefully, a couple other activities that, that I've talked to library staff about, so. That'll be in April.
Any board members have questions or comments for Mr. Padilla? Pancho, personally, I'm very grateful for your presentations and your education to us. We, the board of these items from, before you got on the board, we didn't have these. And now this is an addition to our agenda, addition to the information we learn and receive, and I'm grateful. I think it's very valuable. It really emphasizes the importance of libraries and literacy and the combination of the two.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Library Board Bylaws Amendments, and I am the one responsible for this. So I hope you've had a chance to look at the bylaws. It seems like the more that we look at them, and I've had a few conversations with Juanita about them, it becomes a little more cloudy and a little less clear. We review the bylaws periodically, and the last time we completed it was in March of '24, so just a year ago. And at that, and I've got a copy of the, those bylaws that were signed by the existing members. We only had six members at the time. And our, our membership in the board was low at that. People had left. We hadn't had a chance to replace them. So this last page is dated March 14, '24. And, and the people that signed it, two of them are no longer on the board. Anna Doan signed, and Marcy Verona signed. They're, they both left the board. So Christian Hernandez signed, Ed Delsey, myself, and Juanita. So it was a poor representation of the board membership as of today's membership. Now, so when we signed it, the, the, the bylaws included, if you have your copy, under Section 2, Terms and Vacancies, "A trustee may be reappointed for a second term but may not serve more than two consecutive terms." That was a phrase that was inserted in these bylaws that we signed in March of '24. So the clarity that I'm lacking is, does these bylaws go into vigor, as they would say in Spanish? Do they go into action effective the date of signing, which was March of '24? So does that mean that the two-year, the term limit, does that begin at that time? Or does it, is it retroactive to the previous appointment? I don't know. Personally, I just don't know. I'm not going to say, yes, I'm not an opponent or proponent. I don't know. But it needs to be clarified, because the issue is with Mr. Delsey. Mr. Delsey's term expires this month, and unfortunately, he's not here. And we don't feel that we can reappoint him because of this phrase, this term limit. But in effect, if the, if the phrase goes into vigilance with the signing, then yes, he could be. I don't know. We need, I guess we need an interpretation from the, from the city's legal counsel. So, so there's that issue. There's another, there's a few grammatical errors in this where it should be plural and not singular. Juanita found a two with her editorial eye. There's a second change that I would like to propose, and that's under Appointment, where it says the names of prospective trustees may be recommended. I think it should be shall recommended, because, and the reason for that is it gives this board a little bit more influence and authority that it doesn't have. Shall designates something that's mandatory, may designate something that gives you permission or a possibility. Now, that is, so I would like to entertain a motion to make that change in the bylaws. Juanita, do you have any other observations if you saw, I said you saw some grammatical errors?
Yeah, I wonder if we should make these suggestions and vote on it the next meeting, do you think?
I think that would be appropriate, because we also need to get the legal interpretation of that phrase. Exactly when does it go into effect? So I guess we could ask the NITSA to take it to the legal counsel for that interpretation. And I hope they could give it to us expeditiously within, before our next meeting. It's not a major legal decision. So is that appropriate? Is there a consensus? Any, any discussion? We don't have a motion on the floor to discuss, but is there any, anybody have any comments or observations they would like to make?
I just, one observation, as I read through it, is you kind of, just depending on where you are, we jump from shall to may, shall to may.
Exactly.
It could be more consistent.
Yeah, there's an inconsistency there that I noticed. I'd like to, I would prefer if we stick to shall. To your point, it gives the board some, some more authority, I think, where as, as may is, again, it's, it's not clear to me.
It's permission.
Right.
Right.
Right. But I noticed that, and I know you brought it up at our last meeting, where we're jumping, you know, between those two words, and so I'd like to see more consistency.
All right, then I would ask you, and all of us, take an hour, read the, read the bylaws carefully. Send your suggestions to either me, email them to me or to the NITSA. Within a day or two, we'll have them all ready, and then we will take them to the attorney with all the changes. And we will, I use this word again, expeditiously move this forward. Because these bylaws changes seem to drag on for months and months and months, and I don't really think it's necessary. We can do it. It's not that difficult. All right? Thank you. I think that, I don't have anything further to say. Does anybody else have anything further to say?
I guess my question would be, if we find out that the trustee may be appointed for a second term, et cetera, that one.
Well, then we will, we will, because I, when I, when Denisa pointed out this phrase and the possibility conflict with Mr. Delsey, I immediately communicated. I sent him an email. He didn't respond that he would not be permitted to run for another office, but perhaps I'm incorrect. We'll wait for that. And if it turn that he is, well, then we will entertain his nomination, plus any other nominations that may be presented.
Okay, in that case, then we will not change the language in this. We simply, this will go from 20, well, from now, or from 2024. It will be act, it will be-
I think, but that, we'll wait for the legal interpretation.
Okay.
All right?
Fine.
Everybody satisfied with that? You're looking at me, or do you have any comments, sir? You may. Thank you. Okay. All right, I think that concludes that agenda item. We will move forward with item four, the Sonora, Sonora Library Update. Vice Chairman Havel.
Well, since last month, there haven't been any changes. There's still no furniture in the community meeting room, which would be so helpful for people who would like to meet there. And the, there's no fax machine, or the phone has not been attended to so that Mila, the clerk there, can make, let's say she can make calls. No, she can receive calls, but she can't make calls. So she's using her phone rather than the library phone. So you can reach the library by phone, but the phone still doesn't permit her to call out, and she's using her cellphone. I think, yeah, I'll give, I'll talk about the activities in the, when we talk about Sonora Library. That's pretty much where we are.
Yeah, go ahead. You want to say something?
Yeah, I want to comment on that over the phone. It, it does work. You can make in calls, and she can make a calls. She just have to like follow the, the long distance before calling the number. It's just like a long distance code before. Yes.
Is she aware of that? Because I spoke with her yesterday.
I'll, I'll check with her, but yeah. So we're going on the phone.
And, and she has a, this is something new. There's a lunch hour that she has, so the library is actually closed from 1:00 to 1:30?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, so there is a sign on the door, so the patrons are aware that it's closed.
All right, I've noticed that Assistant County Manager Chris Young is making notes on these comments about the county facilities. So if you find out about the phone, yes or no, will you let him know? So then he knows whether to pursue it or whether it's resolved. Thank you. I would like to just insert a tiny comment here. In many of the observations, our conversations or agenda items, we mention the community meeting rooms as we're talking about libraries. And the reason for that is because they're so physically connected. Sonora is right, the community room is right next to, is adjacent in the same structure, and in Rio Rico also. So, but they are two separate issues. The furniture, tables and chairs in the community room in Sonora and Rio Rico are not really library issues, but it's things that library board members have seen in our activities. But we need to make that clarification that the community room issues are not really library issues. But, but because we're so close, we mention them in our conversations. Great, fantastic. Thanks. Moving forward, item five, the Rio Rico Library. We just keep coming back to this, don't we? Well, I will, this has been on the agenda for every month for over a year, I believe. I believe that step by step, we're making progress. The idiomatic phrase, the longest journey begins with the first step. I think we're beyond our first step for now, the second or third. But on February 24, we had a meeting at the Rio Rico Library, and Mr. Young was there, and Mary Dahl, another county contractor, was there, and myself. And we toured the building, and we looked at the building, and we discussed options and possibilities. And perhaps the, the consequence, the fruition of that meeting is now it's on the agenda for this afternoon meeting. So we are moving forward with, with the expansion of services and facilities in the Rio Rico community. I think activities continue to expand there. We have a very good employee who is really dedicated to the community. We also have a very, and the woman who was here last week, Renee Kuren, is a very dedicated volunteer. I don't know if you, people know that or not, but she, she comes and reads to the pre-K reading hour, and she even brings her banjo and sings. I was hoping she was going to be here today, but she's not. But she did tell me she was going to try and come to the afternoon meeting, so maybe we'll get her input then.
Renee has expressed an interest in joining the Friends of the Library.
Wonderful.
We will probably see her there.
Oh, good.
Get an update on her activities.
Perfect. Thank you. Item six, Acquisition and Weeding Policies. Vice Chairman Havel.
Yes, I had to ask about the policies, and we have a printout that Director Denisa provided with us. And I think you all had a chance to read it. And the only, I had a couple of questions about it. What age do, like, can someone have a library card? I assume that parents sign for younger children?
There's no age limit. If a parent's, if a parent comes in with a toddler and they want to get a card for them to read board books, they're more than welcome to. There's no, there's no signing or anything like that. Like, all the parents signs for their, if the little, the child is practicing their signature, you know, they can write in their, their name or anything like that, so, but there's no age limit.
No age limit.
If they want to get it for their three-month-old, because they're reading to them, we're more than welcome. If they want to get it for their three-month-old because they're reading to them, we're more than welcome. So there's no age limit.
Oh, okay.
And there are some things on this that we're working as staff to, to bring it up to date. Because the last time it was completely passed and dated and everything was in 2004. So we need to, there's a lot of things in here that have not been, certain things from the manual have been taken care of and advanced and everything. But there's certain sections that have not, and we're working that as a library team. So we're going back and forth and we are going to work on it and finish updating it. And we will bring it to mayor and council. Before that, we will bring it to the board as well. And any suggestions, anything that you see on here on the material selection policy, as I told staff, look at all other libraries. Bring your comments, more than welcome. And I'm glad, I'm so glad that Juanita brought this up because we need to update this. It's been 20 years. Yeah. I mean, we do, we are current with our, with our acquisitions and our weeding from other libraries and what we've seen. But yeah, this whole packet, this whole policies and procedure, it needs to be updated completely to 2025. We don't have Millennium anymore, as you know. We have Polaris. That needs to be in here. Also, it's not just Nogales. It's also Rio Rico. It's also Tubac, Sonoyda and the mobile library. So live additions. And we don't have a reference section anymore or VHS.
Exactly. Yeah.
So we need to update that and include audio and streaming and hoopla and everything else that's coming. So.
And another question, what, what reviews do you consult? The criteria for selection, that's on your page 14. You have published reviews, patron demand and examination for determining new purchases.
Staff looks at the School Library Journal. We also get the Horn Book online. We also have New York Times. I also talk to other colleagues from other libraries. I have good resources from Prescott Public Library, Pima County, Coolidge Library and other librarians from around the state and also from the Amigos Network.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I just want to, so you already have subscriptions then? Because that was something the Friends were interested in.
Yeah, we have subscriptions.
The expense of that. Okay. Let's see, anything else I had? Oh, the shelving space. There were shelves, I mean, there's fewer shelves in the Nogales library now. Are they, are they going, are you, were you planning to purchase more? I know.
Yeah, as you know, we have that second project that was done with the flooring and we needed to make space. Those big tall shelves were 60 years old and our collection also needed to be weeded out and we needed to see what the community needs. If the books aren't being checked out for over 20 years or they were dirty or, you know, you need to update the collection diversified and it needs to represent Nogales. And also as the project, we still have one more section of the main library that needs to have the floor finished. So we made space and we made space for the teen area, which is vibrant now and, and growing. So yes, those shelves will be replaced with shelves that are more, they're safer for people and also easier to move things around. Because we do want to like move that space around, use that space for community needs.
Thank you. Do you have a list of all of the, the books that are weeded out?
Yes, that's through Polaris. We're, and we're working on that. And we also have Abol. Because everything that gets taken out, it gets replaced at all four libraries. So the collection is diversified. And I mean, we are not, we are a community hub as well. We're not just a museum like of just books anymore too. So we have to like keep the community's needs as well as keeping the library vibrant. So.
Are there any questions from, from the board? Anything to add?
I just had a comment, and you mentioned it already, but the video policy, when I was reading through that, it's like completely outdated. And I can tell it's from 20 years ago, you know, talks about local video stores.
Yeah, I'm like, we don't have Blockbuster anymore.
We don't have.
Yeah.
Very nostalgic, but no. So, yeah, I'm glad you're looking that over because it could use a rewrite for sure.
Yeah. And if you see anything, please write it down, email it to me, email it to Brian and we'll get it into the policies and procedures.
We did update the, the policy for challenging books. That is updated. So you can merge that with this.
Yeah, correct.
So that it's consistent.
Now that you mentioned about, you are like looking for what the community needs. I think in the library is missing bigger section of Spanish, book in Spanish. Because this community, a lot of people does not, don't speak English. And I think it's like, we need more books in Spanish, but not only for kids, also for adults.
Thank you. I agree. Thank you.
Any further comments by the board?
I just have a comment. Well, I know that the community needs a lot of things. We understand that we are a community with, you know, Gales, the median income for families is like a half of the rest of the state. And sometimes they need some asset development opportunities. So how we want the libraries that we have in the county, how much we want to expand or how much we want to bring to the community? If we are talking about bringing and satisfying other community needs, are we open to, to bringing some other stuff? Like anything that is going to help to those families to, to get more asset development opportunities? Or saying how much we are open to, to expand or to connect to the community? Thinking, I will mention it, like I know that, that the library is a place where the community can go. It's a building that is part of the county. And can we build that oven over there? Just because you have to bake bread. And we don't have to sell it right there because the, the county health department is going to come up with some of their ideas. But at least to train those people to do some type of culturally related foods or some other stuff. Are we open to that point or not? Not yet. Are we not ready yet? Just, just throwing away something. And, and at the end is some of the, what actually the community needs. We have a double-digit unemployment in Nogales most of the time, a lot of seasonal jobs. And also understand that the community is very creative and innovative and they find a way to provide to the families. But at one point, they're going to need some other stuff to, to support to do it, more technical or more opportunities for them. Just thinking about it. Just, just for that. We want to go and expand.
Go ahead, go ahead and participate.
Actually, it's open to, to, to all of us.
Sure.
So you're asking how can the county help provide more opportunities to the community working with the library? Is that what I asked?
So let me, I mean, I'll try and tell me. So I think what, what board member, Yescaz is saying is, and it kind of goes back to you, you just mentioned, Daniza says, looking at it from a perspective of community hubs, is there opportunity for expansion at these sites? Right. For, I think, remember, Yescaz gave an example of like Nogales Community Development has, or the kitchen, right? Has, has, you know, it's community kitchen, right? And are there opportunities for, that's just one example of expansion so that community members can go use these sites or facilities? If there's opportunity for other things such as, you know, community oven or whatever, right? I think, and I think it leads to our bigger discussion about the community meeting rooms and, and, you know, how can we utilize these facilities so that it's not just library or it's not just, you know, but.
So that's, yeah, that's exactly, so first of all, and I'm, I'm going to speak for myself, I can't speak for the supervisor.
Up there so you could, so they could hear you on YouTube. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So this, okay. So understand that I'm speaking, and you obviously I wasn't prepared for that question in that sense, right? So I'm speaking on, from myself, not necessarily from the, the three supervisors. Because at the end of the day, they're the ones who decide what we do with county. Could you're asking specifically about county property, correct?
Right, right.
Okay. What I can tell you is we're open to all proposals. And I can tell you that we want to do whatever is with our means to offer to the community. Now, you mentioned the, the kitchen, right? You know, that was done by NCD through them, right? So that's a separate organization. That wasn't done by the city or the, you know, and I believe the county did support in some efforts with that. But what I can tell you is, and that's exactly, what you're saying is exactly what we're trying to get to, for example, today in the town hall, is we want, we know, we recognize there's a space there that's not being used. And I will tell you, there are some limitations because our county health department is there and there are limitations because we do need that in case of an emergency situation like we had with COVID. There's certain things that we just can't, we have to make sure that they're available, right? So there are limitations on that building. I'll explain that a little bit more tonight at the town hall. But that's why we're doing it is because we want to know what the community feels like we should, what kind of activities we should have in that building. Okay? Obviously, since it's county property and you, private selling of goods and things like that aren't allowed. But when it comes to community events, I mean, obviously the county is open to what the community thinks we should do within our means, right? So I don't know if that helped answer your question, but I think we're thinking the same thing because that's exactly why we put that building, that topic up in the town hall meeting today is because we want to hear from the community. We have a few great proposals. And so, but we want to just make sure that it's a, it's a public decision, right?
Right.
So what, I guess what I'm saying to you, the next step or action item would be, talk with me and tell me what proposals you have that you'd like to see at our community hubs. Yeah, the county can maybe support it.
I think that there is a lot of, of needs and we can see them because we work directly with the community and the people. And we find out that at one point, a lot of the community needs some support to become U.S. citizens, I would say. Sometimes they'll hand the funds. Maybe we can work in something to do kind of, of like a loans or whatever we need to, to invest some of the funds that we have to, to do that type of opportunities, empowering the people. Some other people need like a technical support to understand a little bit how they can formalize or expand their businesses. And also they need also to, to point out how they can start up businesses without being so, so hard. And like, like for the permits and for the, the follow-ups and stuff like that.
And the other thing is I want to, when, when the proposals come, well, obviously the first thing we'll do is we'll ask, you know, is that service already provided? You mentioned the citizenship. I believe the Mexican consulate helps some, support some of those efforts.
Sometimes, not all the time. Right now, the, the central community is doing something with, with those one, pero.
And I'm not telling you, no, I'm just saying the first step is, is that service already provided, right? Because if it's already provided, maybe it's just that, hey, you need to contact these people. They can help you out. And then if it isn't, then we look deeper into that proposal and see, see if it's something that the county can, can support. I mean, that, that's the process. So.
But just what I, I want to hear if, if how open we are as for the infrastructure that we already have and, and, and the relationship with the.
What I can tell you is, is, you know, obviously there's two new supervisors. And obviously Supervisor Morela has always been this way too, is they really want to communicate with the community and they really want to get in, like you're saying, and, and create things that, that support our constituents. And so when, if you have those proposals, now's a good time to come to me first so I can, you know, like I said, there's a filter through it as far as is that service already provided? But yeah, if you have ideas that you think the county could support, please bring them to me.
We will. Well, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Young. Thank you, Mr. Young. Moving forward, item seven, Friends update by Member Ed Delsi. Ed's not here today. Juanita, you're a member of Friends. Would you like to comment?
Yes, we will be meeting, following this meeting at the Nogales library. We've finished spending the money from two grants, $20,000 on the programs that Anna Noon had, had found a consultant to visit. I think you're familiar with some of the programs that have been done at libraries and the Head Start and preschools. So this is terminated. We're looking at other possible proposals for more grants, more, more activities. And so if anyone has any suggestions, the Friends are welcome, will welcome any suggestions. Let's see, I think we're working on a grant right now to purchase books from, it's from Penguin Random House. And we'll see, the 17th, I think they will let us know whether or not we'll be given that grant. That would be specifically for the Nogales library to purchase books for, for children. And that's who we are now.
Thank you. All right. Item eight, discussion and possible action to approve the minutes of December 18th, 2024 and February 12th, 2025. I know we've received the minutes from February 12th, 2025. And, but I don't know, the minutes, the December 18th are up to our secretary, Christian Hernandez, who's not present today. Do you know if those minutes are ready?
The IT is going to put them up on the audio. He's working on it.
Right now?
He's working on it. He should get it by Friday. So I'll email.
By Friday. All right. So we will have the minutes for the December meeting later this week. So at the moment, I will entertain a motion to approve the February minutes only. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the minutes of February 12th, 2025. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The minutes for December, we will push forward to the next April meeting. Item six, board reports, current events summary must be brief and there are going to be proposal, discussion, delivery or legal action taken. Board members, any comments or observations you wish to make at the meeting? No? Thank you. All right. Well, I'm basically going to say, I know that Mr. Young said he needs it maybe at 11:00 and I know we're going to be through at 11:00. So I just want to express my appreciation and gratitude for coming personally and professionally. You've added a lot to our meeting, to our knowledge, and I hope to see you again. It was really been, really been fruitful.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I know that the city and the county have a wonderful relationship regarding the library. And we want to continue that relationship and we want to see it grow also. So thank you for the invitation and I hope it lasts.
Thank you very much. Great. Item seven, library director's report, love of reading week events.
I'll start with the love of reading week events. So we had two staff members visit the Mountain View School and read to the kids early that week. So they did storytime to total of four classes. Also during that week, we had a, three groups from Calabazas pre-K visit our library. So staff did tours, storytimes and craft with the kids. Also during that week, we had regular storytime and Lego. And to celebrate Dr. Sue's birthday, we had the Lorax movie. And we had people coming in and we give popcorn, water, juice. So, so we had a busy week during that time.
Sure, please.
Yeah. So for Women's History Month, we have all displays for all our libraries. We have different books from women authors and stories that we want to put out there. And those displays have been put on social media. Also, we have the Mexican consulate event, March 20th. We're getting ready for that as well. We've been in contact with them and they are ready to come and set up the books that they're giving out. And good thing is, most of these books will be in Spanish and those will be able to circulate in our system. Also, staff is getting ready for National Library Week. A lot of things are coming in. And we have proclamations. We have at the Santa Cruz County meeting, April 1st and April 2nd here at City Hall.
And I will remind the board when those dates get closer, hopefully you're able to attend one or two of those meetings. You just have to stay for the proclamation. It'll be good for city and county to see the board there. And I am going to have staff at the city council meeting for the proclamation. And the last item, I was nominated by the library director from Longview Public Library in Texas, Director Aldridge, to be in the Amigos Library Board. The Amigos Library Services is a consortia of libraries, both public and academic. It's a nonprofit organization that started back in Dallas. They're still situated in Dallas. We've worked with them. We've been a part of Amigos since I've been there. We get services with OCLC, interlibrary loan, cataloging. There's free resources for staff. We've used them. And I was surprised to get the call and I will be nominated May 14th through Zoom by the CEO, Miguel Figueroa, and by Director Aldridge. May 14th through Zoom by the CEO, Miguel Figueroa, and by Director Aldridge. The current representative for Arizona is Corey Christians, he's the public library director for Prescott Valley, and his term is up, so I was nominated. It was a, it's a great surprise, and it's a great way to represent not only Nogales, the county, but also border public libraries, and more public libraries need representation, so I'm in, and it's not going to cost the city or the county, Amigos takes care of everything. They meet four times a year, two times virtually, and then with other, other places, which include either Oklahoma, or Texas, Missouri, wherever the other organizations are, so I'll be traveling, it's going to be fun, I'm excited. And promoting library services and Nogales and the county, so it's a first, and it's exciting.
What is the length of your term?
It is three years.
And is it renewable, or is it just a?
It's three years, and I'm able to get re-elected one more time, and then somebody else will have to join.
Good. Well, that's a wonderful, wonderful event for Deniza personally and professionally. I'm sure she's going to learn a lot participating with these other librarians, and what she learns, she'll bring back to her staff, which will improve and enhance the quality of our library services that we offer. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item eight, future agenda items. Well, I'll start off, we're going to have Mr. Delsey's term concluded at today's meeting in the month of March, so we now have a vacancy to deal with. He can be renominated, perhaps, we'll wait for the legal interpretation of the bylaws. Supervisor Davis told me that he has a few candidates in mind, and I thought they would be here tonight, today, but they're not, so I will contact him to find out if he does, and who they are, and what information he can provide us about that, and if any of you know of any individuals that might want to serve, you can bring their nomination forth at the April meeting. So we have, that will be on our next agenda. I don't know what else. We'll have the bylaws again, because we'll have that interpretation to conclude. Don't forget to review the bylaws and submit your suggestions to myself or to Deniza. Any other agenda items you wish to add?
I have a question, this is the at-large member of the board?
This would be the large member of the board, because if you look at the membership as we sit here, the Rio Rico members are Christian Hernandez and Pancho, Juanita's from Sonoyta, I'm from Tubac, so that's the four county representatives. You three are city reps, and Omara is a city rep, so that's four from the city, so the ninth position that will be vacant is at large, so it can either be county or city. So, right?
Yeah.
It could be the county or city, and I guess, depending on where the individual lives, it will be depending on what entity we take the nomination to. So if it's a county resident, we'll take it to the board supervisor, if it's a city resident, we'll take it to the, is that, is that correct?
Yeah.
That's correct. Okay, so that's that.
That's good.
So bring your nominations forward by the April meeting, if you have any. Any other agenda items you wish to add, or just let me know, or let Deniza know, and we'll put them on the agenda. Our next meeting is.
Sorry, quickly, on the agenda items, can we get an update, maybe on Saturday hours for Nogales at the next meeting, since that was brought up during the crowd of the public?
Yes.
And then the other one is the form, I guess, that needs to be used now, to use the community rooms, yeah. So maybe if we could get an update on that, because what I heard in the call to the public was that it was kind of confusing, so maybe, I don't know if we can get an update on that, what that looks like.
Right, we should ask the county for an interpretation, how the scheduling of the community is.
Right.
I can tell you what I know, but I don't know if it's official and formal, is that in Sonoyta, they're going to be making the reservations through the Rodeo, the rodeo organization, is that?
I don't know, I haven't heard.
Okay, we need that clarification. And in Rio Rico, I think they're going to ask the health department to handle the reservations for the community room there, but that, again, that is, I haven't seen anything formal, so we need the clarifications.
Yeah, so maybe if we could get Mr. Young to help us out with that.
Well, we can, yeah, right. All right. Any other agenda items? Our next meeting will be April 9th, 2025, here at 10 o'clock in this room, and without further items, I will ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second? Second, motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you.
When did you think about the rodeo association?
Is that what you understood?